Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
It is such a delight to see everyone. It's always great to be seen and even more importantly, to see back. So we have this opportunity and we're grateful for this opportunity. Thank all our department heads for being here, all the citizens of Phoenix City. We certainly thank you all for being here. This is our second meeting of the month. I am calling the meeting to order. At this time, the meeting is called to order, and at this time, I'd like to call on Pastor Dolman, who would lead us with the implication that we can stand or remain standing. And after that, Councilman Bailey will lead us with the pledge.
This one, um, let's just pray the prayer of thanksgiving. Father, we thank you for the opportunity to serve this community, to serve this generation, to serve with the gifts, the talents, the education, with the life experiences, with the heart that you've given us. Father, right now, we take upon the mind that you've given us to have the heart and the mind of a servant, for we're servants in this community. So, Father, we thank you for the leadership, the wisdom, the knowledge, the understanding, the insight, the discretion, and the discernment to make wise choices that the city may rejoice and prosper. Father, we pray for the peace of this region. We pray for the peace of this nation. Father, we pray for the peace of the nations, for we're all one body worldwide. Thank you for the grace, Father, to understand where we are in this moment, in our lives, in this generation, in time, in your worship. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. We praise the Lord, please. Attention, salute, pledge.
Pledge the witness to the God of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands, one nation of the God, and individual, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Pastor Dolman. You are welcome to stay, but if you leave, as it appears you are, it will not be hell against you. He didn't pretend. We appreciate you, Pastor Dolman. Thank you so much. At this time, we do not have any presentations or proclamations. We would, at this time, counsel, I can turn our attention to the city clerk. First item is approval of the call meeting minutes for June the seventeenth, twenty twenty-two budget work session. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion, please.
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion to approve this June seventeenth work session, budget work session. We have a motion, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Gordy. We have a motion by Councilman Bailey. Mrs. Lee.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lay?
Yes.
Thank you.
And also, council, next under approval of the call meeting minutes, July the fourteenth, twenty twenty-two budget public hearing. At this time, council, I'd like to call for a motion, please, for approval.
Motion to approve.
Motion from Councilwoman Johnson. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Bailey. We have the motion in the second. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Abstain.
Councilmember Lay?
Abstain.
Thank you.
Thank you. Also proceeding on, council, approval of the regularly scheduled meeting minutes, the August first, twenty twenty-two work session. At this time, I'd like to call for a motion for the approval of the August the first work session. May I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion from Councilman Gordy. May I have a second?
Second.
Since she's on my roll, I'd give that out of my right ear than I do my left ear.
That's fine.
We have the motion by Councilman Gordy. We have the second by Councilwoman Johnson. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Abstain.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lay?
Yes.
Thank you.
Proceeding on, August the second, council meeting, council. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion to approve our council meeting on August the seventh. Second, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion by Councilman Day. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Gordy. Okay, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Abstain.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lay?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Proceeding on, council, on the city council. At this time, are there any unfinished business? Okay, if there's not been any, we will proceed with the resolutions and on the administration. We have a public notice setting an administrative hearing for revocation of business license for RE recycling. May I have a motion to approve this public notice?
Want me to read it?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Mrs. Lee?
Um, public notice. Notice is hereby given that the members of the city council of the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, will conduct the administrative hearing during the regularly scheduled council meeting at nine AM on Wednesday, September the seventh, twenty twenty-two, at the Martin Ida Lauer Park Community Center located at thirty-seven forty-three Moon Lake Drive, Phoenix City, Alabama. The administrative hearing will be held in regards to the revocation of the twenty twenty-two Phoenix City business license for RE recycling located at fourteen oh six Fourteenth Avenue, Phoenix City, Alabama, owned by Chris Wilson. At said meeting, all persons desiring to be heard on the above matter may appear before Councilor, as mentioned, time and place. Past proven adopted this sixteenth day of August, twenty twenty-two.
Thank you, Mrs. Lee, and thank you for keeping me accountable. Council, we've heard the reading of the public notice. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion, please, for approval.
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion by Councilman Gordy. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilwoman Johnson. Any comments or discussion? Okay, if not, call for the vote. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lay?
Yes.
Thank you.
And now, council, proceeding on on administration. There's a resolution in reference to accepting the annual transportation plan report as submitted. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, is required by the Rebuild Alabama Act to file an annual report detailing expenditure set out in the annual transportation plan. And whereas the city has prepared the report, now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, accepts the annual transportation report as submitted. Past proven adopted this sixteenth day of August, twenty twenty-two.
Thank you, uh, Mrs. Lee.
Yes, sir.
Council, we've heard the reading of the resolution. At this time, I would like to ask for a motion, please. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
All right, motion, Councilman Bailey. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Gordy. We have the motion in the second. Any comments or discussion? Okay. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lay?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Proceeding on, council, on the building department. We have a public hearing and resolution in reference to declaring a structure located at one sixteen Fourteenth Court as a public nuisance and authorizing the necessary action to bid, demolish, remove, and clear all building materials, trash, and debris from said premises with all costs being paid using Community Development Block Grant, also known as the CDBG, for the funding. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, has been awarded a Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, funding to pay for the demolition of dangerous and dilapidated structures. And whereas the public hearing was held on August the sixteenth, twenty twenty-two at nine AM, and after due deliberation, the city council of the city of Phoenix City finds that the structure at one sixteen Fourteenth Court, Phoenix City, Alabama, parcel ID number oh five oh five two two four oh two five oh oh nine oh oh oh, is unsafe to the extent of becoming a public nuisance to the citizens of the city and is due to be demolished. And whereas the cost of the demolition will be done at no expense to the property owner and will be paid using the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, funding. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, that the demolition inspection services contractor retained by the city of Phoenix City is hereby authorized and directed to take the necessary action to bid, demolish, remove, and clear all building materials, trash, and debris from property and to have the lot cleared at one sixteen Fourteenth Court, Phoenix City, Alabama. Past proven adopted this sixteenth day of August, twenty twenty-two.
Thank you. At this time, now, and I will continue going forward, have the public hearing first and then ask the clerk to read it. So we've heard the reading of this public notice, but at this time, I am declaring this as a public hearing. If there's anyone at this time that would like to come and address the council in reference to this demolition at this address, now is the time to do so. You can come up to the front. And you're Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Okay.
How y'all doing?
Doing fine. How you doing? If you can momentarily move yes a week in?
Well, I own this property and I have a buyer for it. And the closing lawyer, he said he want to restore it. And I said, I mean, okay, because I know I wasn't going to do anything with it. And what I, what lawyer need is something saying that this won't happen, so he can start working on it.
Okay, now, let me explain this. And council, you all join in, city manager, whomever. You do realize that typically when we do have properties demolished, that there's an expense of to the person who owns it. With this, we have this grant, and I don't know whether the attorney that you're using knows this. Typically, what we do is, it's a tax assessment against the person who owns it, if we get to this point. Again, this grant that we're getting is that we can tear this building down or this house down, which would not cost you anything or cost him anything. Now, you are still on the property, uh, the land, but it's a, it's an opportunity for you or in this case, the attorney to decide whether they wants to try to fix it up, which they will only have, correct me if I'm wrong, six months? Is that right, Ray?
Yes, sir.
They will have only six months to start that process and that's to complete it also?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so if that's the case, if that takes place, then if we get to this point again, the assessment would be going against you or him if you sell it to them at that point. You understand that? And council, anything that I missed?
So, I think, Ray, what's the, what's the process he needs to take place with that? He's trying to sell this property. I mean, whether it's him or whoever buying it, what's the process that they need?
Correct. I mean, he, he still has to disclose to them that it's, that it's in the demolition process. Um, if, if he buys it and wants to fix it up, he's still gonna have to get permits. And, uh, the house is pretty.
Yeah, it says it's kind of in bad shape, looking at the pictures.
Yeah, he probably looking at fifty, sixty thousand dollars to put in to fix it up.
Has he, he's viewed it?
Yes.
Okay.
He said he wants it.
All right, he needs to understand if, if we go down that path, or you all go down that path, he's gonna only have six months.
Ray, how many days you giving them to get permits?
I mean, if he's, if he's gonna, if he's gonna move forward, he needs to get it probably in the next thirty days.
Well, the question is, is how, when's he gonna, are you gonna be closing? You have a closing schedule?
Yes.
You have a closing date?
You know, they want, want to know something about paperwork, about this, demolition.
So, let me make sure we understand that he wants to know whether this process was continued to move forward before he makes the decision?
Yes.
Okay.
But he, before they can get permits, that he would have to sell the property to that other person and then they can get the permits?
Correct, yes.
So as long as you do that within thirty days, then he would be allowed to get the permit?
As long as that.
As long as you sell the property to him, to whoever the buyer is, and he has, then he, within thirty days, then he'll have time to get the permit to, to be able to try to restore the, the house, correct?
Yes.
Now, let me ask you this, Mr. Drake. Does he want the house or the property?
He said the house.
Well, you really can't have one without the other.
But he got, uh, I guess, combination to do.
Well, let me say this.
Let me, let me ask you this. Is he aware that the property can be, I mean, they can clean up, tow it around, everything, no cost to him? Are you, he aware of that?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Again, as Councilman Gordy stated, the title has to transfer whoever it transferred. Now, he is the owner of that property. Uh, it needs to be understood that if it's not torn down with this grant, the burden's going to fall upon whoever the owner is as far as tearing down the house.
If they, if they don't, if they don't take responsibility.
Bring it up to court.
If they don't, when they have six months to do that.
Thirty days for the permit, right?
Yes, is that right, Ray?
Yeah.
And then, is it six months from that day, once they get the permit? Okay.
So.
I, I mean.
Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does, but the closing lawyer down on Fourteenth Street or?
We, we don't need to know no names, but again, let me say this. He or she needs to understand that if, if it's not done with this grant, the burden's gonna fall on whoever the owner is. And then, what I'm hearing or what we're hearing is that there's gonna be a transfer of title, which he's, purchase is from you, and he's gonna, or she's gonna become the owner. It will fall upon them as their responsibility after they get the permit, and they will only have six months to restore that house. Or either he could tear it down, but it would be, or she, it would be at their expense.
So are they asking you for something to show them?
Yes, show the closing lawyer that, what Johnson.
So can we prepare, can we?
Can we do that?
Can we prepare something for him to take to that closing attorney just to show what the process is?
Yeah, they would need to know too that he, that the new owner would only have thirty days and then six months. All that would have to be done.
Yeah.
And that's done later, and you missed opportunity today, and then that new buyer says, well, that's too short a timeframe.
It's gonna fall on you.
It's gonna fall back on you for this to be torn down.
And it would still be torn down, and it'd be at your expense.
At your expense. You don't know how the new owner is gonna accept the thirty days to get a permit, then six months to finish the job, and may not be prepared to do it in six months.
Well, as long as they don't pick up a permit, it's still not gonna be torn down, right?
This is a situation that you face. And how long you had information on this property that it was condemned?
I can't remember.
That's what I'm understanding. So, and then the lawyer that you talked to, and you all in the process of this, how long have they known that it was?
Uh, maybe about three weeks.
Three weeks, okay. No one, none of them thought of coming to the building department to approach them and, and ask them about this situation before today?
Well, I guess he pulled something, and that, that's how it come up.
But no one, has anybody approached?
Mr. Drake, come in and ask, and ask about it. Because it was set for public hearing, that he would have to talk before council.
Okay, so, so they made that move.
Yes, sir.
So wanted to make sure that.
Yes, sir.
But it, it's extremely important that the purchaser, whoever that may be, is made aware that the property is in the process of being condemned, because it's a violation of our law, not disclose that.
So, now, at this point, Mr. Drake, the burden is on you, because again, and I don't, I'm not speculating though, but, uh, you know, the pictures that we've seen, it's, it's gonna.
Yeah, I know, it's.
Now, again.
But here's the thing, if, if something happens and you don't sell this property, it's gonna, you're not gonna do anything with it, correct? So it's gonna get torn down if he doesn't sell it. I think what you're asking is you need a piece of paper to take to the closing attorney to explain the process that we just explained to you. I don't know if there's something, is there a way that he can get that?
Yeah, we can explain the process, the whole process going here. You can do your, you know, you can take, get a copy of this and see what's, what's going on with this. But yes, we will do that, because I already been down there. So Ray will give him the information on, on what the situation is, and they must follow that to the T, because if this don't happen, then don't go back on this list.
No, that's, that's what, now, you got to understand, it's gonna fall on you.
It's gonna, it would fall on Mr. Drake, and if you probably looking at twelve, fifteen thousand dollars to tear it down, if it's.
That's correct.
If it falls through.
That's right.
So that would be a tax lien on the property if, if that was the case.
You understand what you're saying?
Marvin, you understand this?
Once this process, once this, once the process began, it won't come back on this list. As the mayor said, it's everything will fall on you, on the owner.
Yeah, I understand.
Okay, so again, for clarification, you want something from the city?
Saying that, he got to get the permit, thirty days for the permit, and six months after that.
He has to fix it up.
Yes. Let me ask you something. You get that from the city, you take it to the lawyer, the new owner looks at that and says, that's too short a period of time, I'm not gonna do that. Now where you gonna be? You gonna come back to us, wanna be back on this list? Are you gonna tell us to do the vote?
Marvin, you want to.
I mean, that's what I'm saying, it's just that serious.
Well, I just have to tow it out myself. I, I can handle that.
Right.
Okay.
I mean, that's all I'm saying. I don't want you to get caught in the middle with the new owner thinking that he's gonna have a longer period of time than what the city's gonna give him, 'cause that he may not be aware of. So I don't want that to interfere with him. But I would want to also.
I'm more sliding.
Yeah, but then it may be too late.
Well, once you leave a day. That's what I'm saying. You can slide it when you want to, but once, once this is put on another list, this is done deal, is what I'm saying. At this point in time, we can't go forward anymore on this list here.
Once I leave this door, it'll be on me, so I.
But once you leave that microphone.
It's on you.
It's on you, is what I'm saying.
So Marvin, we all clear on that?
To make it clear, you said Mr. Drake came in, right?
Yes, sir.
You explained this to him at that point in time?
Yes, sir.
Already know?
That's already been explained.
Okay.
So, you know, that's, that's taken care of, because the process after then, if that's not taken care, once that lien is put on there and that's not paid for tax time, whatever the assessment and need to be dealt with that can stay. And I want to make something clear to people, 'cause a lot of people have in their mind that the city is doing this to take people property. That property don't come to the city. That city, that's when you will be dealing with state Alabama, if it make it to that process.
If you don't pay that lien.
Yeah.
Right.
And it's good to see you, Marvin. I haven't seen you in a while, but we just want to make sure you, once you leave the mic, it's gonna be on you. And that's why I asked, this grant tears it down, and you can still own the property. But I would check to see with him, 'cause he may just want it, it hurt. I mean, but that's, that's between you and him. Of hurt.
Yeah, I understand.
Okay, so all minds are clear?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions or any other thing?
I'll ask you real quick, before we vote. So if we're going to allow him, we need to make a motion to deny this item. Yeah?
Yeah.
This single item.
Right, yeah.
Yeah. Because we're not asking to approve.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? So we've heard the reading of it, and we're open to public hearing going forward before I ask the clerk to read it. So with that, council, we've all heard the deliberation and the understanding. We all on the same page. So at this time, I'd like to ask for a motion to deny this, uh, uh, resolution. May I have a motion?
Motion to deny.
All right, motion from Councilman Gordy. May I have a second?
Sure.
Second, Councilman Bailey. Second, Councilman.
That's, that's fine.
Okay, second, Councilman Bailey. Call for the vote. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Um, Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lay?
Yes. Thank you, Marvin. Good to see you.
Good to see you.
As a matter of record, um, you want to officially close that public?
Yeah, I am. Yeah.
What do, uh, do I need to get anything to show?
Need to get with, uh, him. Okay. Is there anyone else that would like to come and address council in reference to this property? If not, I am declaring this closed. Okay? All minds are clear? We've gotten the vote, and we're moving on to the next one. On the building department, B, there's a public hearing and resolution in reference to declaring a structure located at three twenty twelfth Avenue South as a public nuisance and authorizing the necessary action to bid, demolish, remove, and clear all building materials, trash, and debris from said premises with all costs being paid using Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, funding. At this time, I am declaring this public hearing open, and if there's anyone that would like to come and address this council in reference to this property being demolished, now is the time to do so. Okay. Don't want it to come forward. I am declaring this public hearing closed for this particular property. And with that, I will call upon the clerk for the reading of the resolution. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, has been awarded a Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, funding to pay for the demolition of dangerous and dilapidated structures. And whereas a public hearing was held on August the sixteenth, twenty twenty-two at nine AM, and after due deliberation, the city council of the city of Phoenix City finds that the structure at three twenty twelfth Avenue South, Phoenix City, Alabama, parcel ID number oh five oh eight two seven one zero two zero zero five zero 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 is unsafe to the extent of becoming a public nuisance to the citizens of the city and is due to be demolished. And whereas the cost of the demolition will be done at no expense to the property owner and will be paid using Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, funding. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, that the demolition inspection services contractor retained by the city of Phoenix City is hereby authorized and directed to take the necessary action to bid, demolish, remove, and clear all building materials, trash, and debris from property and to have the lot cleared at three twenty twelfth Avenue South, Phoenix City, Alabama. Past proven adopted this sixteenth day of August, twenty twenty-two.
Okay, thank you so much, Mrs. Lee.
Yes, sir.
Council, we've heard the reading of the resolution. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion, please.
Motion to approve.
Motion, Councilman Day. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Gordy. Okay, we have the motion in second. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lay?
Yes. Thank you. Proceeding on, council, we have a public hearing and resolution in reference to declaring a structure located at five thirty-five Tenth Avenue South as a public nuisance and authorizing the necessary action to bid, demolish, remove, and clear all building materials, trash, and debris from said premises with all costs being paid using the Community Development Block Grant funding. At this time, uh, council and to the public, I am declaring this as a public hearing opening, and if there's anyone that would love to come and address this council in reference to this property, now is the time to do so. Okay, since no one has stepped forward, I am declaring this public hearing closed. And at this time, I'd like to call upon our clerk for the reading of the resolution. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, has been awarded a Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, funding to pay for the demolition of dangerous and dilapidated structures. And whereas a public hearing was held on August the sixteenth, twenty twenty-two at nine AM, and after due deliberation, the city council of the city of Phoenix City finds that the structure at five thirty-five Tenth Avenue South, Phoenix City, Alabama, parcel ID number oh five oh seven two six two oh one one oh one three zero 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 is unsafe to the extent of becoming a public nuisance to the citizens of the city and is due to be demolished. And whereas the cost of the demolition will be done at no expense to the property owner and will be paid using the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, funding. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, that the demolition inspection services contractor retained by the city of Phoenix City is hereby authorized and directed to take the necessary action to bid, demolish, remove, and clear all building materials, trash, and debris from the property and to have the lot cleared at five thirty-five Tenth Avenue South, Phoenix City, Alabama. Past proven adopted this sixteenth day of August, twenty twenty-two.
Okay, thank you so much. Council, we've heard the reading of the resolution. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion, please.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Councilman Gordy. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilwoman Johnson. Comments or discussion? Okay, not? Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lay?
Yes. Proceeding on, council, we have a public hearing and resolution in reference We have a public hearing and resolution in reference to declaring a structure located at six eleven South Railroad Street as a public nuisance and authorizing the necessary action to bid, demolish, remove, and clear all building materials, trash, and debris from said premises with all costs being paid using community development block grant funding. At this time, I'd like to have an open, uh, public hearing. I am declaring it now. If there's anyone that would love to come and address council in reference to this property, now is the time that you have the opportunity to do so. Okay. Since no one has stepped forward, I am declaring this public hearing closed and like to call upon our clerk for the reading of the resolution. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, has been awarded a community development block grant, CDBG funding, to pay for the demolition of dangerous and dilapidated structures. And whereas a public hearing was held on August sixteenth, twenty twenty-two at nine AM, and after due deliberation, the City Council of the City of Phoenix City finds that the structure at six eleven South Railroad Street, Phoenix City, Alabama, parcel ID number oh five oh one 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 three three oh four oh one eight zero 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 is unsafe to the extent of becoming a public nuisance to the citizens of the city and is due to be demolished. And whereas the cost of the demolition will be done at no expense to the property owner and will be paid using the community development block grant, CDBG funding. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, that the demolition inspection services contractor retained by the City of Phoenix City is hereby authorized and directed to take the necessary action to bid, demolish, remove, and clear all building materials, trash, and debris from the property and to have the lot cleared at six eleven South Railroad Street, Phoenix City, Alabama. Passed, approved, and adopted the sixteenth day of August, twenty twenty-two.
Okay, counsel, we've all heard the reading of the resolution. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion, please. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion from Councilman Gordy. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Day. Any comments or discussion? If not, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Dave?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lay?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Proceeding on, counsel, we have a public hearing and resolution in reference to declaring a structure located at seven oh eight Williams Avenue as a public nuisance and authorizing the necessary action to bid, demolish, remove, and clear all building materials, trash, and debris from said premises with costs being paid using community development block grant funding. At this time, I am declaring this as a public hearing. If there's anyone that would love to come and address this council in reference to this property, now is the time to do so. Okay. No one has approached. I am declaring this public hearing closed and would like to ask the clerk to read the resolution. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, has been awarded a community development block grant, CDBG funding, to pay for the demolition of dangerous and dilapidated structures. And whereas a public hearing was held on August sixteenth, twenty twenty-two at nine AM, and after due deliberation, the City Council of the City of Phoenix City finds that the structure at seven oh eight Williams Avenue, Phoenix City, Alabama, parcel ID number zero five zero five one six four zero one six zero one three zero zero nine zero is unsafe to the extent of becoming a public nuisance to the citizens of the city and is due to be demolished. And whereas the cost of the demolition will be done at no expense to the property owner and will be paid using the community development block grant, CDBG funding. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, that the demolition inspection services contractor retained by the City of Phoenix City is hereby authorized and directed to take the necessary action to bid, demolish, remove, and clear all building materials, trash, and debris from property and to have the lot cleared at seven oh eight Williams Avenue, Phoenix City, Alabama. Passed, approved, and adopted the sixteenth day of August, twenty twenty-two.
All right, thank you, Ms. Lee. Counsel, we've heard the resolution. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion, please.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Johnson. Is that a second?
Yes, second.
So we have a motion in the second. Any comments or discussion? Okay. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Dave?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lay?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And proceeding on. We have a public hearing and resolution in reference to declaring a structure located at eight twenty Sixteenth Avenue as a public nuisance and authorizing the necessary action to bid, demolish, remove, and clear all building materials, trash, and debris from said premises with all costs being paid using community development block grant funding. At this time, I am declaring this as a public hearing. If there's anyone that would love to come and address this council, uh, in reference to this property being demolished, now is the time that we allow you to do so. Okay. No one has stepped forward. I am declaring this public hearing closed and I am asking the clerk to read the resolution. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, has been awarded a community development block grant, CDBG funding, to pay for the demolition of dangerous and dilapidated structures. And whereas a public hearing was held on August sixteenth, twenty twenty-two at nine AM, and after due deliberation, the City Council of the City of Phoenix City finds that the structure at eight twenty Sixteenth Avenue, Phoenix City, Alabama, parcel ID number zero five zero five one five four zero zero four zero one seven point zero 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 is unsafe to the extent of becoming a public nuisance to the citizens of the city and is due to be demolished. And whereas the cost of the demolition will be done at no expense to the property owner and will be paid using the community development block grant, CDBG funding. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, that the demolition inspection services contractor retained by the City of Phoenix City is hereby authorized and directed to take the necessary action to bid, demolish, remove, and clear all building materials, trash, and debris from the property and to have the lot cleared at eight twenty Sixteenth Avenue, Phoenix City, Alabama. Passed, approved, and adopted the sixteenth day of August, twenty twenty-two.
Okay. Counsel, we've heard the reading of the resolution. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion, please. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion from Councilman Bailey. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilwoman Johnson. Comments or discussion, counsel? Okay. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Dave?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lay?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, counsel, is a public hearing and resolution in reference to declaring a structure located at eight twenty-three one half thirteenth court as a public nuisance and authorizing the necessary action to bid, demolish, remove, and clear all building materials, trash, and debris from said premises with all costs being paid using the community development block grant funding. At this time, I am declaring this as a public hearing that is now open. If there's anyone that would like to come and address council in reference to this property, you have the opportunity at this time to do so. Okay. No one has stepped forward, so I am declaring this public hearing closed and, uh, I'd like to call upon our clerk for the reading of the resolution. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, has been awarded a community development block grant, CDBG funding, to pay for the demolition of dangerous and dilapidated structures. And whereas a public hearing was held on August sixteenth, twenty twenty-two at nine AM, and after due deliberation, the City Council of the City of Phoenix City finds that the structure at eight twenty-three one half thirteenth court, Phoenix City, Alabama, parcel ID number zero five zero five one five four zero zero three zero zero six point zero 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 is unsafe to the extent of becoming a public nuisance to the citizens of the city and is due to be demolished. And whereas the cost of the demolition will be done at no expense to the property owner and will be paid using the community development block grant, CDBG funding. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, that the demolition inspection services contractor retained by the City of Phoenix City is hereby authorized and directed to take the necessary action to bid, demolish, remove, and clear all building materials, trash, and debris from the property and to have the lot cleared at eight twenty-three one half thirteenth court, Phoenix City, Alabama. Passed, approved, and adopted the sixteenth day of August, twenty twenty-two.
All right, thank you so much, Ms. Lee. Need to get you a drink of water?
I might need to swallow.
Counsel, we have all heard the resolution. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion, please.
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion from Councilman Day. May I have a second? Second, Councilman Gordy. Comments or discussion? Okay. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Dave?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lay?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And counsel, proceeding on. We have a public hearing and resolution in reference to declaring a structure located at nine oh two Sixteenth Avenue as a public nuisance and authorizing the necessary action to bid, demolish, remove, and clear all building materials, trash, and debris from said premises with all costs being paid using community development block grant funding. At this time, uh, counsel, I would like to declare this as a public hearing. And if there's anyone who would like to come and, uh, address this council in reference to the property, now is the time to do so. Good morning.
Good morning.
Are you Mrs. Carr?
I'm her daughter, Benita Carr.
Brenda Carr?
I'm Benita Carr.
Oh, Benita, okay.
Yes, I'm her daughter. Um, we do want the property torn down, but I just found out about it Thursday. And, um, I have building material inside that I want to donate to Habitat for Humanity. Um, so I just need to know what date I can have them to come pick it up. Um, so that's, that's all I have, but we do want it torn down.
Okay. And you, you, you taking the great opportunity to do it because it's won't cost you all anything, but we'll let, uh, you need to get with Ray Rogers, our building department person.
Because I, I tore it out fifteen oh six and it cost me ten thousand.
So you know, huh?
Yes.
Okay.
Great, great, great. While you're there, we should take our opportunity to explain to her because it's been a developed property that, once they carry it down, you must maintain the property and keep it clean and cut.
Oh, that's right.
Okay, that'd be good.
I, 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 I'm a loan person, so I'm, I'm good.
Yeah, that's good.
Yeah, that's fine.
Well, you learn from the other men.
Yes. Yes. Okay, thank y'all.
Anything else you may need to ask?
Well, no, um, because I had, I was in the process of, um, before she, um, moved in with me. I was in the process of, of restoring it, um, because they did all the electrical and the plumbing and put, you know, and I got like new building materials inside the house, but I told her, I said it'd be cheaper for me to buy a new one instead of, you know, fixing this one for her, so. I, I, I'm just glad I got this opportunity, so.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carr.
Thank you so much. Okay. Anyone else? Oh, okay. Since no anyone else that'd like to address council in reference to this property? You, you come up to the mic. Good morning, if you can. If you can pull you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I went to the other address. They told me at the Berlin Safety to go by the Auto Zone anyhow. Uh, I should have been there earlier. The address is five three five Tenth Avenue South.
Oh, I'm sorry. Hold on a minute. You, you talking about action item C? So did you just get here?
Yeah.
Okay, so, uh, so you want to address the council and we've already taken action. Do we need to? Uh, we can that? So we can still go ahead and hear without having to go back to that process?
What is it that he wants first?
I mean, we can allow him to talk, even though, okay. Go ahead. That's on action item C, right? Is it five thirty-five Tenth Avenue South?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's counsel. That's action item C. Yeah, yeah. Just hold, stand, you right there. But we've heard the, uh, the reading, uh, uh, we haven't heard the reading, but we have given anyone another opportunity to come and address the council in reference to the last property that Ms. Carr just talked about. Are there anyone else? So, all right, so I am declaring the public hearing for that particular property closed at this time, and then I'd like to ask Mrs. Lee to read the resolution. Mrs. Lee?
Um, whereas the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, has been awarded a community development block grant, CDBG funding, to pay for the demolition of dangerous and dilapidated structures. And whereas a public hearing was held on August sixteenth, twenty twenty-two at nine AM, and after due deliberation, the City Council of the City of Phoenix City finds that the structure at nine oh two Sixteenth Avenue, Phoenix City, Alabama, parcel ID number zero five zero five one five four four zero two zero four one zero 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 is unsafe to the extent of becoming a public nuisance to the citizens of the city and is due to be demolished. And whereas the cost of the demolition will be done at no expense to the property owner and will be paid using the community development block grant, CDBG funding. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, that the demolition inspection services contractor retained by the City of Phoenix City is hereby authorized and directed to take the necessary action to bid, demolish, remove, and clear all building materials, trash, and debris from the property and has the lot cleared at nine oh two Sixteenth Avenue, Phoenix City, Alabama. Passed, approved, and adopted the sixteenth day of August, twenty twenty-two.
Thank you, Mrs. Lee. And counsel, as we all know, that's action item H. So we've heard the reading of the resolution. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion, please.
Motion to approve.
Motion from Councilman Gordy. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Day? We have the motion in the second. Okay. Any comments, questions, or discussion? Okay. At this time, Mrs. Lee?
Um, Councilmember Dave?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lay?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, let me ask you, you, now I know you're not Mr. Davis.
No, I'm not.
So, counsel, uh, Jim, can we have a person speak on behalf of this property if they're not?
The public hearing, anybody can speak.
I just wanted to make it clear. Okay.
That he don't represent.
Yeah.
Yep, he just asked a question.
Okay, go ahead. I was thinking you were representing, that Davis.
No, we, we bought. First of all, this is my first time here, so I apologize if I'm out of line or something. Uh, we bought a bunch of properties from Mr. Davis and this is one of them. Uh, so I happened to drive by there and I saw a notice, uh, all torn up and all that. So, we have, uh, bought properties from him and this is one of those.
How long has it been since you bought this property?
It's been more than six months.
And that's typically long enough to get a recording, isn't it, Jim?
Yes.
They're not that long.
Huh?
They're not that long.
But typically in six months, you can have the recording.
He talking about the deed?
The deed, yes. I mean, for us not to have it.
It's, uh, once you
I know you can do a quick one.
Recorded the deeds, you can get it back in ten to forty weeks. It's not, you know, it wouldn't take six months to get it.
Well, that's my point. So what I'm saying is should it be in his name now?
Yeah, and he owns it.
But according to what we've seen in his, his, his name is not on it.
Did, did the person you bought it from indicate to you at the, uh, closing that, uh, the house had been condemned?
They didn't.
Haven't been putting your name.
Yeah, that's the question.
You, you purchased the property, did you put the property in your name?
Have you put the property? We had, yes, we did have a closing and there were about close to ten properties.
So you have paperwork which you there that says?
Not at the moment, but I do have the paperwork.
Okay, so you do have proof that the deed is in your name now? The property?
I should because
Well, we can't go on till it.
Well, we went to the closing and, you know, lawyer did all the, grand legal firm did all the paperwork, so.
Well, let's, okay, I guess probably need to, uh, you would have to get with, um, Mr. Ray Rogers there and I guess, so you don't want this property demolished. But we can't act on it because we have to, correct me if I'm wrong, counsel. We have to have proof that it's in your name.
But, but hold on, hold on. He didn't answer that question that you asked us. Do you want this property demolished or not?
Not at the moment, no.
No, no, no.
I mean, I want, I mean. Go ahead, continue.
Okay, let's explain, you know, you just got here, but the I'm not gonna get in the way that the mayor let you know what, if you don't do.
Within six months.
What's gonna happen? And you got to have proof.
You, what, what this does, this grant allows the, the city to have dilapidated properties, cleaning up the city, torn down at the expense of this grant, not to the expense of the owner. All right?
Okay.
If the owner, and this is what we're in limbo with, uh, not saying he didn't purchase it, but, you know, there's certain laws and regulations we have to follow with the deeds being the property in the name. If you don't want to follow that process, if you provide that with him, to him, then it will cost you, the owner, to pay for the demolition of that property. This is an opportunity where it does not cause, cost the owner any money to have it demolished. They will still own the land, or the dirt, as I call it. But if everything is in order with properly having the deeds that you are the owner, the question is, we still come back, do you want to have it torn down or not?
Need to know too.
Yeah.
After you got thirty days, I'm assuming you get a permit, and you got six months to bring this all the way back to full life. Six months. You had six months already, and you ain't took it to full life. So, that's where you are now. You're back to that same six months again. And if it ain't done in six months, next time it comes before us, it gets torn down inside your pocket, even with money spent on it, if you're not to that.
I understand. By the time you run out of grand or...
Well, no, not necessarily. We give you an opportunity now, but if you don't... We can't put you back on the list with this grant.
I see. Well, then let's demolish it.
But you still need to make sure that you're properly...
I'll take care of that at the lawyer's office, and I'll go to the deed office. But if that's the case, then let's quickly take care of it.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
We just want to make sure we clarify, so you would understand.
I, thank you for explaining it. Thank you for the time.
There's several thousand dollars that you'll save. You don't have to spend the money, won't cost you anything, so it's... It, looking at the pictures of it and everything, I mean, it looks to me like really improving.
It's in bad, yes.
That is a wise thing to do. Have a piece of property to reason, to start something new.
Thank you.
He's a businessman. He made that decision.
No, I still have to go home to my wife, so.
We understand that. How well do we understand that? I'm sorry, just, what you got?
I need his name.
First name is Razzi, R-A-Z-I. Last name is Sayed, S-Y-E-D. The property should be under Sayed Family Trust.
Just get with, uh...
Sayed, S-Y-E-D, Family Trust.
Get with Ray. You might have to get with, uh, attorney too, but Ray?
I just wanted to make, and as of, as of our research on April the twenty-fifth, it was still in the Davis's name.
See, that's, that was the point I wanted to bring out to you.
I'll find out.
And I knew you wanted Mr. Davis, 'cause I know the Davis's. That's why I said that. And wanted to make sure we're doing it correctly.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, council, proceeding on. We have a public hearing and resolution in reference to declaring a structure located at nine eleven Eighth Avenue as a public nuisance and authorizing the necessary action to bid, demolish, remove, and clear all building materials, trash, and debris from said premises with all costs being paid using Community Development Block Grant, also known as CDVG funding. At this time, uh, I am declaring, uh, this as a public hearing, and if there's anyone that would love to come and address the council in reference to this property being demolished, now is the opportunity that you have. Okay, no one has come forward. I am declaring this public hearing closed. And at this time, I'd like to call on a clerk to read the resolution. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, has been awarded a Community Development Block Grant, CDVG funding, to pay for the demolition of dangerous and dilapidated structures. And whereas a public hearing was held on August the sixteenth, twenty twenty-two, at nine AM, and after due deliberation, the City Council of the City of Phoenix City finds that the structure at nine eleven Eighth Avenue, Phoenix City, Alabama, parcel ID number zero five zero six one four three three zero two zero four nine zero 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 is unsafe to the extent of becoming a public nuisance to the citizens of the city and is due to be demolished. And whereas the cost of the demolition will be done at no expense to the property owner and will be paid using the Community Development Block Grant, CDVG funding. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, that the demolition inspection services contractor retained by the City of Phoenix City is hereby authorized and directed to take the necessary action to bid, demolish, remove, and clear all building materials, trash, and debris from the property and to have the lot cleared at nine eleven Eighth Avenue, Phoenix City, Alabama. Passed through and adopted the sixteenth day of August, twenty twenty-two.
All right, thank you so much, Ms. Lee. Council, we've heard the reading of the resolution. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion, please. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
All right, we do have a motion from Councilwoman Johnson. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, from Councilman Day. Any comments or discussion, council? Okay, call for the vote. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Loe?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And proceeding on, council on the Building Department. We have a public hearing and resolution in reference to declaring a structure located at nine thirteen Eighth Avenue as a public nuisance and authorizing the necessary action to bid, demolish, remove, and clear all building materials, trash, and debris from said premises with all costs being paid using Community Development Block Grant funding. At this time, I am declaring this as a public hearing that is open. If anyone that would love to come and address this council in reference to this public hearing, now is the opportunity that you have. Okay, no one has stepped forward. I am declaring this public hearing closed. And call on my, for Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, has been awarded a Community Development Block Grant, CDVG funding, to pay for the demolition of dangerous and dilapidated structures. And whereas a public hearing was held on August the sixteenth, twenty twenty-two, at nine AM, and after due deliberation, the City Council of the City of Phoenix City finds that the structure at nine thirteen Eighth Avenue, Phoenix City, Alabama, parcel ID number zero five zero six one four three three zero two zero five zero 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 is unsafe to the extent of becoming a public nuisance to the citizens of the city and is due to be demolished. And whereas the cost of demolition will be done at no expense to the property owner and will be paid using the Community Development Block Grant, CDVG funding. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, that the demolition inspection services contractor retained by the City of Phoenix City is hereby authorized and directed to take the necessary action to bid, demolish, remove, and clear all building materials, trash, and debris from the property and to have the lot cleared at nine thirteen Eighth Avenue, Phoenix City, Alabama. Passed through and adopted the sixteenth day of August, twenty twenty-two.
Okay, thank you so much, Ms. Lee. Council, we've heard the reading of the resolution. This time, I'd like to ask for a motion, please. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion from Councilman Day. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Gordon. Comments or discussion, council? If not, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Loe?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Proceeding on, council, we have a public hearing and resolution in reference to declaring a structure located at ten oh two Second Place South as a public nuisance and authorizing the necessary action to bid, demolish, remove, and clear all building materials, trash, and debris from said premises with all costs being paid using the Community Development Block Grant funding. At this time, council, I would like to declare this as a public hearing. If there's anyone that would like to step forward to address this council in reference to this property, now's the time to do so. Okay, no one has stepped forward. I am declaring this public hearing closed. And call upon our, for Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, has been awarded a Community Development Block Grant, CDVG funding, to pay for the demolition of dangerous and dilapidated structures. And whereas a public hearing was held on August the sixteenth, twenty twenty-two, at nine AM, and after due deliberation, the City Council of the City of Phoenix City finds that the structure at ten oh two Second Place South, Phoenix City, Alabama, parcel ID number zero five zero eight two seven one zero zero two zero one three point zero zero one zero is unsafe to the extent of becoming a public nuisance to the citizens of the city and is due to be demolished. And whereas the cost of the demolition will be done at no expense to the property owner and will be paid using the Community Development Block Grant, CDVG funding. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City that the demolition inspection services contractor retained by the City of Phoenix City is hereby authorized and directed to take the necessary action to bid, demolish, remove, and clear all building materials, trash, and debris from the property and to have the lot cleared at ten oh two Second Place South, Phoenix City, Alabama. Passed through and adopted the sixteenth day of August, twenty twenty-two.
Thank you so much. Council, we've heard the resolution. At this time, I'd like to ask council for a motion.
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion from Councilman Gordon. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Woman Johnson. I was gonna say, he closer to me.
Right, you're right.
It took him a little longer to travel to me. We, we can't see that, but that's... So, we have the motion and the second. Any, uh, comments, questions, or discussion, council? Okay, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Loe?
Yes.
Thank you.
And next, council. We have a public hearing and resolution in reference to declaring a structure located at eleven seventeen Twenty-third Court as a public nuisance and authorizing the necessary action to bid, demolish, remove, and clear all building materials, trash, and debris from said premises with all costs being paid using the Community Development Block Grant funding. At this time, I am declaring this council, uh, public hearing open. If there's anyone that would like to come and address council in reference to this property, now's the time to do so. Okay, no one has stepped forward. I am declaring this public hearing closed. And at this time, I'd like to ask the clerk to read this resolution. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, has been awarded a Community Development Block Grant, CDVG funding, to pay for the demolition of dangerous and dilapidated structures. And whereas this public hearing was held on August the sixteenth, twenty twenty-two, at nine AM, and after due deliberation, the City Council of the City of Phoenix City finds that the structure at eleven seventeen Twenty-third Court, Phoenix City, Alabama, parcel ID number zero five zero five one six one zero zero seven zero three four point zero 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 is unsafe to the extent of becoming a public nuisance to the citizens of the city and is due to be demolished. And whereas the cost of the demolition will be, will be done at no expense to the property owner and will be paid using the Community Development Block, CDVG funding. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, that the demolition and inspection services contractor retained by the City of Phoenix City is hereby authorized and directed to take the necessary action to bid, demolish, remove, and clear all building materials, trash, and debris from the property and to have the lot cleared at eleven seventeen Twenty-third Court, Phoenix City, Alabama. Passed through and adopted the sixteenth day of August, twenty twenty-two.
Thank you so much, Ms. Lee. Council, we've heard the resolution. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion, please.
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion from Councilman Day. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Gordon. Any comments or discussion, council? Okay, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilman Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Loe?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, council. We have a public hearing and resolution in reference to declaring a structure located at twelve twenty Eighth Street as a public nuisance and authorizing the necessary action to bid, demolish, remove, and clear all building materials, trash, and debris from said premises with all costs being paid using Community Development Block Grant funding. At this time, council, I would like to declare this as open public hearing, and if there's anyone that would like to come and address council in reference to this particular property, now's the time to do so. All right, since no one has stepped forward, I am, council, declaring this public hearing closed, and would like for Mrs. Lee to read the resolution. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, has been awarded a Community Development Block Grant, CDVG funding, to pay for the demolition of dangerous and dilapidated structures. And whereas a public hearing was held on August the sixteenth, twenty twenty-two, at nine AM, and after due deliberation, the City Council of the City of Phoenix City finds that the structure at twelve twenty Eighth Street, Phoenix City, Alabama, parcel ID number zero five zero five one five four four zero four zero three eight point zero 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 is unsafe to the extent of becoming a public nuisance to the citizens of the city and is due to be demolished. And whereas the cost of the demolition will be done at no expense to the property owner and will be paid using the Community Development Block Grant, CDVG funding. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, that the demolition inspection services contractor retained by the City of Phoenix City is hereby authorized and directed to take the necessary action to bid, demolish, remove, and clear all building materials, trash, and debris from the property and to have the lot cleared at twelve twenty Eighth Street, Phoenix City, Alabama. Passed through and adopted the sixteenth day of August, twenty twenty-two.
Thank you so much, Ms. Lee. Council, we have all heard the reading of the resolution. This time, I'd like to ask for a motion, please. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion by Councilman Gordon. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Bailey. Council, any comments or discussion? Okay, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Loe?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And next, council on the Administration. We have a resolution in reference to authorizing and directing the mayor and city manager to sign change order number two with J. Douglas Martin and Associates Incorporated for the model of the economic development building. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, in resolution number twenty twenty-two dash thirty-four, dated February the fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, contracted services of J. Douglas Martin and Associates Incorporated to renovate the economic development building in the amount of three hundred thirty-four thousand seven hundred twelve dollars seventy-seven cents. And whereas the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, excuse me, in resolution number twenty twenty-two dash thirty-five, dated February the fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, did approve change order number one with J. Douglas Martin and Associates Incorporated for a contractual, contractual adjustment in the amount, in the additional amount of seventeen thousand one hundred thirty-three dollars twenty-three cents, causing the contractual amount to be three hundred fifty-one thousand eight hundred forty-six dollars. And whereas it's been determined that a change order is deemed necessary more specifically as follows. Change order number two attachment with an addition of twenty thousand two hundred fourteen dollars fifty-one cent. Total amount of change order number two, an additional twenty thousand two hundred fourteen dollars fifty-one cent. And whereas such a change order would result in a contractual adjustment of an additional twenty thousand two hundred fourteen dollars fifty-one cent and causing the contractual amount to be three hundred seventy-two thousand sixty dollars fifty-one cent. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, that the mayor, city manager, hereby authorized and directed to sign change order number two with J. Douglas Martin and Associates Incorporated to renovate the economic development building to increase the contract as stated above. Passed through and adopted the sixteenth day of August, twenty twenty-two.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Lee.
Yes, sir.
Council, we've heard the resolution. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion, please. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion by Councilwoman Johnson. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Bailey. Council, are there any comments or discussion?
Yeah, what is it? The change order, what's it gonna be used for?
Councilman Bailey, after, after the contractor got started and the, um, got to look at the roofing, um, when he went to get roof to, the shingles to match the existing shingles, they were not available. Therefore, um, they needed just to replace the roof on the existing portion as well. Um, so that was one of the change orders. And then another change order is that, uh, they have to have a ramp to get into the building now, because the building pad is higher than what we anticipated. So, we've got to add, add a change order for, for, to add that ramp into place.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you, Ray.
Appreciate it.
Any other comments or discussion? If not, at this time, I'd like to call for the vote. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Loe?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And on the Finance Department, council, we have a resolution in reference to rejecting all bids received for copy paper. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City of Phoenix City Finance Department received bids for copy paper on July the first, twenty twenty-two. And whereas one bid was received. And whereas the product prices provided were relatively higher than the prices quoted from previous years, and the vendor was unable to guarantee a standard price throughout the term of the contract. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, authorizes the mayor, city manager, to reject all copy paper bids. Passed through and adopted the sixteenth day of August, twenty twenty-two.
Thank you so much.
Yes.
Counsel, we've heard the resolution. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion, please.
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion from Councilman Gordon. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Bailey. Comments or discussion? Okay, if not, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lay?
Yes.
Thank you.
And next, counsel on the Fire Department. We have a resolution in reference to declaring personal property as surplus and disposing of on the nominal sum of one dollars and other valuable consideration to Sergeant William Pitts for his twenty-five years of public service. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, has items of personal property which are no longer needed for public or municipal purposes. And whereas Section eleven forty-three fifty-six of the Alabama Code of nineteen seventy-five authorizes the municipal governor body to dispose of unneeded personal property. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, that the following described property is hereby declared surplus to be disposed of with consideration of the nominal sum of one dollar and other valuable considerations to Sergeant William Pitts in recognition of his twenty-five years of public service and dedication to the Phoenix City Fire Rescue Services and the citizens of the City of Phoenix City. One Karen's helmet, model number ten ten dash C dash TRD, and one Blackington Sergeant Driver Engineers Badge, model number B two nine six. Passed proof and adopted the sixteenth day of August, twenty twenty-two.
Thank you, Mrs. Lee. Counsel, we've heard the resolution. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion, please. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion by Councilman Day. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Gordon. Okay, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lay?
Yes.
Thank you.
And counsel proceeding on the Fire Department, we have a resolution in reference to declaring personal property as surplus and disposing of on the nominal sum of one dollars and other valuable consideration to Captain Randall Norris for his twenty-five years of public service. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, has items of personal property which are no longer needed for public or municipal purposes. And whereas Section eleven forty-three fifty-six of the Alabama Code of nineteen seventy-five authorizes the municipal governor body to dispose of unneeded personal property. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, that the following described property is hereby declared surplus to be disposed of with consideration of the nominal sum of one dollar and other valuable considerations to Captain Randall Norris in recognition of his twenty-five years of public service and dedication to the Phoenix City Fire Rescue Services and the citizens of the City of Phoenix City. One Karen's helmet, model number ten ten dash GDR, and one Smith and Warren Captain's Badge, model number Gold S one four three. Passed proof and adopted the sixteenth day of August, twenty twenty-two.
Thank you, Ms. Lee.
Yes, sir.
Counsel, we've heard the resolution. This time, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion from Councilwoman Johnson. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Bailey. Okay. We have a motion and second. At this time, I'd like to call for a vote. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lay?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And next, counsel on the Police Department. We have a resolution in reference to authorizing the mayor, city manager and the chief of police, Raymond J. Smith, to sign a service agreement with Motorola Solutions to cover radio frequency, infrastructure, radio system maintenance and the NICE, NICE logger system in an amount not to exceed four hundred and thirty-one thousand, six hundred and thirty-five dollars and seventy cents. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, desires to enter into an agreement with Motorola Solutions for the Police Department. And whereas said contract will cover radio frequency or Alf infrastructure, radio system maintenance and the NICE, NICE logger system. And whereas the City Council has reviewed said agreements submitted by Motorola Solutions for a three-year service contract agreement in an amount not to exceed four hundred thirty-one thousand, six hundred and thirty-five dollars, seventy cent. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, that the mayor city manager is authorizing officials and Raymond J. Smith as chief of police are hereby authorized and directed to sign a service agreement with Motorola Solutions in an amount not to exceed four hundred thirty-one thousand, six hundred and thirty-five dollars, seventy cent. Passed proof and adopted the sixteenth day of August, twenty twenty-two.
Okay. Counsel, we've heard the reading of the resolution. This time, I'd like to ask for a motion, please. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion by Councilman Day. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Gordon. Comments or discussion? Okay, not, call for the vote. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lay?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And proceeding on now, counsel on the Utilities Department. We have a resolution in reference to accepting a quote from Consolidated Pipe and Supply Company Incorporated for one Mueller B one oh one direct tap, tapping machine and accessories in an amount not to exceed five thousand, six hundred and three dollars. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, operates a water distribution WD system. And whereas the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, has to install water services as needed. And whereas the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, has to use a tapping machine to tap into water mains for water main service installations. And whereas the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, desires to purchase one Mueller B one oh one direct tap tapping machine and accessories to install water services more efficiently. And whereas the city has received a quote from Consolidated Pipe and Supply Incorporated, company incorporated for one Mueller B one oh one direct tap tapping machine and accessories in an amount not to exceed five thousand, six hundred and three dollars. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, hereby authorizes the mayor city manager to accept a quote from Consolidated Pipe and Supply Company Incorporated for one Mueller B one oh one direct tap tapping machine and accessories in an amount not to exceed five thousand, six hundred and three dollars. Passed proof and adopted the sixteenth day of August, twenty twenty-two.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Lee. Counsel, we've heard the resolution. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion, please. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion by Councilman Gordon. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilwoman Johnson. Any comments or discussion, counsel? Okay, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lay?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, on the Utilities Department, is a resolution in reference to accepting a quote from American Control Service, LLC to purchase flow transmitter for the water filter plant in an amount not to exceed fourteen thousand, three hundred and fifty-two dollars and fifty cents. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas the Phoenix City Utilities Department Water Filter Plant, WSP, uses a flow transmitter to measure the amount of water feeding through the basin filters. And whereas the current transmitter is nearing its expected lifespan and needs continuous calibrations and resetting. And whereas the Utilities Department received the following three quotes. American Control Service LLC, fourteen thousand, three hundred and fifty-two dollars, fifty cent. Yokogawa Corporation, twenty-six thousand, fifty dollars. Instrumart, thirty-one thousand, two hundred and forty-one dollars, eighty cent. And whereas the Utilities Department recommends to have American Control Service LLC to perform said work at the lowest quote provided in the amount of fourteen thousand, three hundred and fifty-two dollars, fifty cent. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, does hereby accept the lowest quote from American Control Service LLC to purchase a flow transmitter for the water filter plant in an amount of fourteen thousand, three hundred and fifty-two dollars, fifty cent. Passed proof and adopted the sixteenth day of August, twenty twenty-two.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Lee. Need to catch your breath?
I need some water.
You're doing great, though.
Thank you.
Counsel, we've all heard the resolution. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion, please. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion from Councilwoman Johnson. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Bailey. We have the motion and the second. Are there any comments or discussion?
Just a quick question, this is not an important question. What's the expected lifespan of this? Because it said the one we have is nearing the end of its life, so what, it lasts ten years, twenty years, five years?
Yes, it could last ten years or longer.
Okay. I'm just curious as how long they, you know, generally would last. Sound like, sound like we get all, sound like we get all that we can out of it.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Thank you, Councilman Bailey. Any other comments or discussion? If not, I'd like to call for the vote. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lay?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And proceeding on, counsel on the Utilities Department. We have a resolution in reference to accepting a quote from USA Blue Book to purchase three turbidemeters for the water filter plant in an amount not to exceed thirteen thousand, nine hundred and thirty-two dollars and sixty-four cents. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, operates a water filter plant, WFP. And whereas the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, uses turbidemeters to measure the turbidity in raw, settled and finished water at the WFP. And whereas the WFP has three turbidemeters which are obsolete and need to be replaced. And whereas the Utilities Department received only two quotes for the three new turbidemeters because Hatch products can be purchased only from Hatch and USA Blue Book. USA Blue Book, thirteen thousand, nine hundred and thirty-two dollars, sixty-four cent. Hatch, fifteen thousand, nine hundred and thirty-five dollars, ten cent. And whereas the Utilities Department recommends purchasing the turbidemeters from USA Blue Book at a cost of thirteen thousand, nine hundred and thirty-two dollars, sixty-four cent. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, that the turbidemeters shall be purchased from USA Blue Book in an amount not to exceed thirteen thousand, nine hundred and thirty-two dollars, sixty-four cent. Passed proof and adopted the sixteenth day of August, twenty twenty-two.
Thank you, Mrs. Lee.
I'm gonna picture that word.
Hey, it's tongue-twisting. You did good.
Sorry.
Turbidemeter, I think that's, but you did good. Thanks so much. Counsel, we've heard the reading of the resolution. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion, please.
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion from Councilman Day. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Gordon. Any comments or discussion? Okay, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lay?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Proceeding on, counsel, we have a resolution in reference to authorizing Sidney Helms to connect her property located at thirty-eight ten Opelika Road to an existing city force main sewer line. Mrs. Lee?
Whereas it is the desire of the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, to allow Sidney Helms, Helms, the owner of certain real property located in the Phoenix City Police Jurisdiction at thirty-eight ten Opelika Road, Phoenix City, Alabama, three six eight seven oh, to construct and connect a private sewer line to an existing city force main sewer line upon the terms and conditions and for the reasons outlined below. And whereas Helms owns and operates a hair salon with an attached coffee shop under the name of Sidney Shop of Duty and is currently operating said business with a failing septic system. A legal description and tax parcel number of said property can be found on that certain warranty deed recorded in the office of the Judge of Probate of Russell County, Alabama, at volume fourteen sixty-eight, page one eighty-nine through one ninety-two. All reference to Helms' business or property is to the property described in said warranty deed. And whereas the city and Helms acknowledge Helms' septic system has failed due to the sewage use of the building which has converted to a hair salon. Therefore, design for a new septic system cannot be accomplished or permitted due to the amount of flow from the facility and the fact that there is currently not enough land for, available for a viable septic field. The nearest gravity fed sewer line is such a distance away that to connect to said line would be cost prohibitive. This inability of Helms to install a new septic system that would work, given the volume of flow and the small amount of land space available for a viable septic field together with a cost prohibition for connecting onto the gravity sewer line constitutes an extreme hardship. Helms' current failing septic system constitutes a public health hazard and it is in the interest of the city and Helms that Helms be allowed to connect to the city sewer system. And whereas Helms has agreed to bear all expenses in connection with the construction, maintenance and repair of the sewer line from her business to the connection of the city sewer system and has entered into a written agreement for sewer service. Said agreement requires Helms to pay all fees and costs charged by the city for the sewer connection and to comply with all rules, requirements, regulations and standards set forth by the engineering utilities departments of the city. Helms has further agreed that said sewer line shall be for the exclusive use of the property at thirty-eight ten Opelika Road, Phoenix City, Alabama, three six eight seven oh, and cannot be used by any other persons or for any other property except future purchasers or successors in interest to said property. And whereas Helms has agreed to be responsible for the maintenance and repair said sewer line and system as well as any damage that may be caused by the maintenance and operation of said sewer line or system. Helms has further agreed to indemnify and hold harmless the city of any obligation to maintain or repair said sewer line or system for any damage caused thereby to any party, including the city. And whereas Helms has agreed to enter into a separate agreement to annex the subject property into the city whenever said property may become eligible for annexation. This agreement to do so along with the other agreements contained in the agreement for sewer service shall constitute a covenant running with the land shall be provided to any subsequent purchaser or of said property and shall bind them to the provisions set out in the agreement for services. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, effective this date, shall allow Sidney Helms to connect her property at thirty-eight ten Opelika Road, Phoenix City, Alabama, three six eight seven oh to an existing city force main sewer line upon her compliance with the terms and conditions set out above in this resolution. Passed proof and adopted the sixteenth day of August, twenty twenty-two.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. Counsel, we've heard the resolution. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion for approval, please.
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion from Councilman Day. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Gordon. Comments or discussion?
May I have one, uh, comment? So, it was something like this, and then uh, for Ms. Helms, uh, the, uh, the ability to tap into, uh, the city sewer and, and, and provide this service is a great thing that we have. Uh, but how soon was something like this, uh, Mr. Hunter, how soon was something like this, uh, happened?
It depends on what a contractor's got together along with our department when they can schedule all of it. And, and after this is passed.
Okay.
They have to put a timetable together.
But when a contractor's out there, I hope they'll be able to do it.
Yeah, we're gonna, they're gonna make sure they put everything in, obviously, yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Hunter. This is Johnson, Mr. Day. Any other comments or discussion? If not, at this time, I'd like to call for a vote. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lay?
Yes.
Thank you.
And proceeding on, counsel on the Utilities Department. We have a resolution in reference to accepting a quote from Thompson Pump and Manufacturing Incorporated to purchase an eight-inch high-efficiency pump and hose, hoses for the Warrant Waste Collection Division in an amount not to exceed ninety-five thousand, one hundred and sixty-seven dollars and fifty cents. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas the State of Alabama Examiners of Public Accounts has reviewed and approved the competitive bidding process used by Sourcewell. And whereas the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, operates a wastewater collection, WWC, system which has pipes, manholes and lift stations that have sanitary sewer overflows, SSOs, from time to time. And whereas an eight-inch high-efficiency pump and hoses would help with maintenance and repair said pipes, manholes and lift stations by allowing the flows to be bypassed. And whereas Thompson Pump and Manufacturing Incorporated has submitted a quote for the eight-inch high-efficiency pump and hose accessories from Sourcewell Contract Number one zero one two two one dash TPM at a cost of ninety-four thousand, one hundred and sixty-seven dollars, fifty cent with an estimated freight cost of one thousand dollars for a grand total of ninety-five thousand, one hundred and sixty-seven dollars, fifty cent. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, does hereby direct and authorize the mayor city manager to purchase said pump and hoses from the Sourcewell contract vendor, Thompson Pump and Manufacturing Incorporated, in an amount not to exceed ninety-five thousand, one hundred and sixty-seven dollars, fifty cent. Passed proof and adopted the sixteenth day of August, twenty twenty-two.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, we've heard the resolution. This time, I'd like to ask for a motion, please. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion from Councilman Day. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Gordon. Any comments or discussion, counsel? Okay, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lay?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And next, counsel on the conditional use. We have an application for conditional use approval submitted by Beverly Epsi, authorized, authorized agent to locate U-Saved Pharmacy to six sixteen thirteenth Street. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. The letter is dated July the twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two. The mayor and city council members, um, regarding the conditional use at six sixteen thirteenth Street, Phoenix City, Alabama, three six eight six seven, Beverly Epsi owner. The Planning Commission of the City of Phoenix City met on Tuesday, August the ninth, twenty twenty-two, to consider the request of Beverly Epsi, authorized agent for conditional use of the property located at six sixteen thirteenth Street. The applicant wishes to locate U-Saved Pharmacy. It is the recommendation of the Planning Commission that this request for a conditional use that this request for a conditional use be approved by the City Council. Sincerely, Pat Howard, Chairman, Eliza Phillips, Secretary, Phoenix City Planning Commission.
Okay, thank you so much, Ms. Lee.
Yes, sir.
Counsel, we've heard the reading of the conditional use application. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion, please.
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion from Councilman Gordy. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilwoman Johnson. Any comments or discussion? Okay, call for a vote. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lay?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Lee. At this time, Counsel, I'd like to call upon our attorney, Mr. Jimmy Grant. Mr. Grant?
Mayor, Counsel, we have one claim on the agenda today. Uh, that's a claim filed by Dorothy Ann Williams. Uh, lives at 37 Springwood Drive, Phoenix City, Alabama. The date of the incident was 7/25/2022. Uh, she was traveling on the access road adjacent to 28431. Uh, the city had a crew out there, uh, cutting grass. Uh, one of the mowers picked up, uh, an object and slung it into the side of her car, damaging her door of her car. Uh, you've got the recommendation or the memorandum from our department head in that division. And also, we've got the supplement to the incident report where, um, Charles Parker, our employee, stated that he didn't pick up, uh, the mower picked up, uh, object and slung it into the side of the car. And you've got photographs, uh, showing the damage to the car. Um, Ms. Williams submitted three estimates as required by law, uh, the lowest being $1,605.50. Uh, being somebody works, Inc., I recommend we, uh, approve this claim in the amount of $1,605.50.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Grant. Counsel, we've heard the recommendation from our attorney. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion for the approval of his recommendation. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion from Councilman Day. May I have a second?[1530.74]